I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council? I see number one. We will go ahead and move to closed session. I'll leave that to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. We have three closed-session items. Two are related to the same issue. They are the RDA and City Council Agenda Items Two and Three respectively to discuss potential litigation pursuant to subdivision C of Section 5495-6.9 of the Government Code. And the other item is the Art of Burgess versus the City of Victorville, case number RIC 503565. To the extent there is any reportable action, we will report that at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
All right. Well, now moving to closed session. Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We did have a closed session. I'll defer to our city attorney if there's any announcements out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. There are no announcements out of closed session, no formal actions taken.
All right. At this time, we'll go ahead and move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Reverend Dr. Jesse Giddens from the pastor of the Destiny Christian Center in Victorville. And our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Victorville Police Chief Don Yoder.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come before you tonight once again, thanking you for life and for health and for peace today. We ask you, Father, as we begin this meeting, as we acknowledge you concerning the affairs and the decisions that are on the table for tonight's meeting, we just ask, Father, for your special guidance and directions upon our mayor, our city officials, and upon those that are represented here. We ask you, Father, for your blessing, Father, upon our city and upon those things in which we face and those things in which we are now involved in. We ask you, Father, for divine protection as well, for not only our city authorities, our civil authorities, but also those who live in our community. Father, we acknowledge these tough times and recognize that we need your help greater than ever before. And so, Father, as we even begin, we begin seeking you tonight, thanking you, that you're here in our midst. We ask you, Father, that no matter what we face, God, that you'll give us strength to endure, you'll also give us your divine help to overcome. We ask, Father, for, as we take seriously the human responsibility of the board, of the City Council, and those that are here, we also thank you for your divine sovereignty to be here to help us through it all. It's in the precious name of your son we do pray tonight, and thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
We have a special presentation to make here tonight. If you would all take a look at the banner we have hanging over here. We are recognizing Victor Ben Como, who is serving in the U.S. Army overseas, and we'd like to have his family come up. I think his mother, Cindy, is here to accept this certificate.
I want to say thank you to all of you, all the City Council members, and to all the City of Victorville. This is such an honor, a blessing, to recognize our soldiers that are in wartime, and all our soldiers from past and present. God bless them, and God bless America.
Well, thank you. This banner will be flying over our city here until he comes home, and once he does, we'll present it to him. So, thank you. All right. At this time, if I could have the city clerk present the agenda to the council and any revisions.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. The only revision that is on tonight's agenda is a public comment that was received via email at five o'clock this afternoon from Mr. Aaron Korn. He has public comments. He asked to be included in the record, and those are on the dais for the council. Those are all the revisions, Mayor McCracken.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move into public comment. I have several cards here before me, people wishing to speak before the council, and I'll start off with Jim Loman.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Robertson. My name is Jim Loman. I'm the Public Affairs Officer for AMBETs post 2007, based here in Victorville. This September 11th is the 10-year anniversary of the horrific and tragic attacks on our great nation. You'll find a flyer you were given earlier, such as this here. We will be having a remembrance memorial, September 11th, 6:00 p.m., at the Victorville Fairgrounds. I'm here to actually cordially invite each and every one of you to attend this. Once again, it's at 6:00 p.m., September 11th, at the fairgrounds in the outdoor pavilion. We'll be honoring firefighters, police officers, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, all branches of service, all the heroes and the victims of 9/11/2001. We really hope to see every one of you there, and RSVP would be good for seating arrangements at the number down on the flyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for putting together the event. That's a great, great event. Donna Saldana?
Good afternoon. Well, good evening, actually. This is my first time here, but I would like to bring up a matter, basically Section 8. We have a community that we've, we're, I don't know how to, basically...
The issue is, like she said, Section 8 neighborhood. We're new homeowners over in the Mojave Alavado, KB Homes area, and recently we've had a couple Section 8 families move into the area. And it's been a concern because ever since they moved in, we've had shootings, disruption of the peace over several times, several events. We've had the cops come in and go, you know, all the time because there's always something going on. So, we just want to put this out there for you guys to be aware of what's going on and kind of see what direction and what support we can get from the City Council and from you, Mayor. And that's really what it comes down to.
Okay. Are you Joe?
Yes.
Okay, so I...
You have three cards for us. We just figured we didn't want to be repetitive and just...
Who is the third?
Other neighbor.
Halton, yes.
Halton, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
The ordinance that you're interested in will play on the next City Council agenda, by the way. At least it's scheduled for, for now. Bless them.
John Tiall?
Hi. Hi, my name is John Tiall, and I've been living here in Victorville for over 20 years now. I live in the Brentwood area. It's a beautiful place. I love it. Reason why I'm here tonight, Mayor, and everyone else, is because these past couple of years, we've been having a rash of, I want to say, for lack of better terms, you know, gang, you know, affiliated individuals are running through a breezeway, and it's totally dark. There's access to it in each and every cul-de-sac. At night, it's their haven because they know that they can't be seen, and if the police roll up or something like that, they have various ways to get out. They don't park their cars and their vehicles anywhere near so that they don't get towed, and a lot of times their vehicles are parked in front of my house. There's a park across the street from us. I know the park shuts down at 10 o'clock. The lights go out at 10 o'clock. These individuals are real adapted to the night, and I mean, nothing stops them. We've been having break-ins, you know, homes being vandalized, and not to mention the confrontations that arise from, you know, it spilling onto our neighborhood when they're trying to, I guess, get together and find a good place to hide their vehicles while they walk several blocks to go do whatever it is that they're going to do. And sometimes, like I said, they try to park in front of my house, park in my driveway. They're really bold, real bold individuals, and if you dare to say anything to them, you're not just speaking to one. You know, there's a lot of them in there, and they do, and it happened to us the other night, about two weeks ago. They do retaliate, and they come back in numbers. So, I just wanted to voice my concern about that because I don't think anyone in my neighborhood is, you know, I think everyone is like scared, and they just lock up at night and, you know, they just turn their head and just hope it goes away. In the daytime, it's a beautiful neighborhood, but soon as the sun goes down, it's a totally different atmosphere, and that's when things change. So, I'm here to say that I would like the access to this breezeway, which no one else uses. No one uses it. Only these individuals use it. If we can just get it closed off, and at least we can keep this activity on that side so that it doesn't spill into the neighborhood. The access to these breezeways are probably about, I would say, about maybe six feet, about six feet wide, and they're wrought iron fences. I think that, you know, it would be very effective to have lights put in there, but I know that, you know, that's going to probably be, you know, cost, very costly. But I know the fences, if they go up, there's no need for them to park on this side because then they have to hop over to get to the other side. I'm willing to help in any way I can.
Okay.
Physically and mentally.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Art Figueroa?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You just heard from my neighbor, and speaking on the same thing that I'm going to be speaking on, actually, the breezeway. I was here, I believe, July 19th, I believe, was your council meeting before last, and I was speaking on getting this breezeway closed off, and I spoke to you at that time about that. And I told you how overgrown it was and the problems that my neighbor just mentioned to you. Since that time, someone's been out to clean up all the overgrown things, and I just want to thank you. It looks, it's great. It looks really good. They did a real good job of cleaning it up, and it helps a little bit, and it's a little bit harder for them to just lurk around, but they can still use it. They can still walk through it. And since that time, we've been to all their neighbors in our cul-de-sac, and we've got a petition up, and I'd like to give it to, I can give it to the clerk right now if I'd like to.
When you say it's a breezeway, what do you mean? Is it like a public rockway?
Yes.
Between houses?
Well, it's, at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's, yes, the wrought iron fence it goes, and it's just the opening there. And what's unique about this particular area is, right as you walk through it, it drops down, and it's kind of like in a hole. There's, it's the only, I've walked the, this passo all the way from one end to the other, all the way past the park, and there's no other areas that actually drop down. And these people can stand there, and they, and eye level on the street, and it's hard to see them from the street, and they can just sit there and scope everything out, whereas all the other openings, it's, the sidewalk is the same level as the street, and it's harder for them to hide. So, they kind of picked this one, and like I said, he's been robbed a couple of times. Our other neighbor, cross street, they've been broken into. My next-door neighbor, Vic Rogers, he had his light broken just a few weeks ago. It's just, it's just a problem. So, it'd be nice, like I said, the lighting is the expensive part. It'd be nice, too, but just closing the thing off would be the cheapest way, and I think it would eliminate the majority of the problems. So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Raymond Herrera?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name's Raymond Herrera, president and founder of We the People, California's Crusader. Mayor, I'm here to speak with you about several things. First, I'd like to tell you a story as to what happened last weekend. I did a fair event in central Los Angeles, south central Los Angeles, and the issue that we were covering was how illegal immigration affects the black community. During the lunch period, I walked across the street to McDonald's, right across the convention, south central Los Angeles. I counted 14 Hispanics working in McDonald's, no other ethnicity. This happens here in Victorville, too. You can go around and look at all your McDonald's and Jack in the Boxes. My daughter tried getting a job after high school, so did her friend. She was told, because she didn't speak English, she would not be hired. And that's something that I think the mayor and the City Council should look into. We can't discriminate against, you know, origin, but we can discriminate against Americans that don't speak Spanish and prevent high school students from their first starter job. What I'm here to talk to you about today is how we can improve the work sector in the City of Victorville simply by implementing an e-Verify plan, not just for city workers and contractors, but throughout the city. We have many landscapers. I live in Spring Valley Lake. Every landscaper there is an illegal alien. There might be one that's not, but I'm getting tired of walking out onto this, you know, my neighborhood. All I see is illegal aliens, no license, you know, written on their contractor's license written on their trucks or anything. They're displacing American landscapers, okay? And also in the construction industry, manufacturing, there's a lot of fake IDs out there. I mean, they're counterfeited, that they look better than the ones that, you know, are meant to identify people with. The reason that I'm talking to you about this is because you have the power invested in you to look after the Commonwealth of your constituents in your city. And I think that you should get together with people and see what you can do to work out an e-Verify program where you can enforce e-Verify in your city. It is a federal law. I mean, you know, it's a federal mandate. They're trying to adjust it, you know, fine tune it and everything. But I'm talking about all the unemployed Americans out there. The rightful place has been taken from them because of discrimination against the American people. So, I have several cities that are going to meet with me, and I'm also going to meet with the County Board of Supervisors, and I think it's high time, Mayor and City Council, that we do something to put our fellow Americans back to work, your constituents back to work, and increase our tax base. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Robin Hivison?
My name's Robin Hivison, and I was just going to briefly follow up on the e-Verify issue as well. We're working with cities trying to get e-Verify ordinances established, and I brought some information from some of the cities in our area that have e-Verify ordinances. And e-Verify is a national database that's maintained by the Department of Homeland Security where new hires can be checked to see if they are in the country legally or if a person is legal, legally allowed to work in the United States. So, with 24 million Americans looking for a job, the more cities that enact e-Verify ordinances, the better off the chances for Americans to be hired and for those in our country illegally to no longer work in our cities. The Supreme Court recently ruled in a landmark case that's been very important in regard to Arizona State e-Verify law, it was ruled legal, and that has been a great precedence in our nation. And some of the towns that have e-Verify ordinances are Temecula, Murrieta, Lake Elsinore, Lancaster, and we were a part of a lot of those cities as they enacted the ordinances. So, I brought some of that information tonight to leave, and we look forward to hopefully having Victorville join with other cities and enact an e-Verify ordinance in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew, forgive me, Latome?
Mayor McCracken and members of the City Council, my name is Matthew Latome. I'm a scout master of Troop 256 that is sponsored by the Green Tree Ward of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We're here this evening to show 14 future voters how the democratic and republic system works. The reason that I wanted to address the council is that as I've been using Doris Davies Pool this summer, heaven knows that I need it because my boys treat me well, and I eat too many smores on campouts, that the workers there are telling me that after the summer season that it'll be closed, and I'm concerned about that. Doris Davies Park is a beautiful location. I live within a quarter mile of it, and I use that, so does my church group, with my boy scouts, teach them how to swim and help practice lifesaving skills. So, I'm concerned that it is being shut down with the other pools. I don't know why. I've heard rumors anywhere ranging from not enough money or misuse of funds, and I'm not here to accuse anybody. I'm just here to concern that I'm, what else do we do? I'd rather have my money go to Victorville where we're located than having to travel over high desert to find a pool to use. Again, whatever the reason, and if I'm a daylight and a dollar short, I apologize if this matter's already been closed, but I wanted to know that it's a concern of ours, is the troop, that we won't have a place to swim, teach those basic lifesaving skills, and to give our boys something to do over the summer. If they don't have anything to do, it could lead to other problems, such as tagging and graffitiing and other recklessness. No, my boys won't be involved in that, I hope, but there may be others that we haven't reached yet. Anyway, thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate you listening to me and look forward to visiting you in the future. Thank you.
Could we ask to have the, repeat the response on the pool, Mr. Robertson?
Sure. Last couple of meetings for two months now, we've had people indicate a concern about the Doris Davies Pool. To give you the background for anybody else who's curious after hearing those comments, the Doris Davies Pool was potentially going to be closed. It was the subject of discussions during our budget hearings in the spring, and ultimately, we found a way to fund it at least through this swim season, and our intent is to bring it back to the council at our mid-year budget review sometime early or, I guess, late winter, February, March timeframe, to make a determination for next swim season. So, at this point, it's not being closed. We hope to not close it. However, we have to wait and see what the revenues look like as we get through, through the first half of the fiscal year and find out how well or how poorly the economy is doing through the Christmas season so we know if we'll have the revenues in order to keep it open. But it definitely is an interest item for a lot of individuals. At this point, the pool is open, and we don't want to close it.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Aquino. I'm here again about the pool. I know you just made the announcement about that, but my concern is that I hope you're not waiting till the middle of winter so that everybody's not thinking about the pool because it's winter time and we don't swim. I'm going to be watching this, and I'm hoping that you're going to do everything you can to keep this open because I understand that the city's having a lot of budget problems. I understand that the economy is in a, in a very bad state right now, and I know that's not any of our fault here. However, I know that other cities are finding ways to keep their pools open, and I'm wondering why we're having such problems and even considering closing such a basic service. As a lot of other people have discussed this evening, there is a lot of troubled people moving in, and I work in real estate. I'm going to have a hard time selling a house in Victorville if they don't have, if we don't have basic services to attract people, good people, good families to be here. So, I'm going to put that plug, and I, and I also wanted to know where I can find out about the budget concerns. Is there a website or someplace that I can look to see what's going on with the Victorville budget? Can I ask that question of one of you?
With respect to community services, John Gargan is our director, and if you get his card, he can keep you up to date on what's going on with our parks.
Okay.
And the budget is available online at the city's website.
City's website. Okay.
Full budget, including budget message that goes through some of these things in a more, well, it's not just numbers. It's actually four or five pages of text discussing these issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Adolfo Aquino?
Good evening. My name is Adolfo Aquino. My wife and I, we are realtors, and I had a chance to meet Rudy a couple of years ago. The reason I'm here is because I have some ideas how to create revenues for the City of Victorville. Maybe you may have to make some changes, you know, I've never done this before, and I really would like to see that we can have this money on the table in order to keep the swimming pool alive for those good families that they have kids and they want to do something positive for their kids. I understand that in certain areas in Victorville, we have certain families moving with kids who have a lot of problems. They've been involved in gangs. I know pretty well about these people here today. They came in and they were talking about the area of Hook Street and so on. I'm very familiar with the area. I have some areas that I've been selling in the area, and they kept breaking in, week after week. We called the police. They are not available. I had to spend, you know, maybe two hours waiting for a unit to come in so I can have a report on the house that these specific young kids are breaking in, vandalizing, and so on. so on. So, what I have right here is some idea how to create revenues for the city of Victorville. And some of these ideas, they were actually applicable, and they're still applying, they are still applying these ideas in other cities. And so I wanted to share this with you, you may have to make some changes, you know, but let's start, allow me to read this a little bit. "Legislate or create an ordinance to keep the neighborhood clean." Number one, "I'm proposing to have every homeowner to keep their trash can and recycle bin behind their home gate every day, except the days of the trash company pickup. And if they do not follow the city of regulation after the first warning, after the first warning, for them to receive a fine for the amount of $150. Thereafter, on the third time, to have them pay the amount of $300, and if they do not follow through, they will have to provide three days of incarceration or community service in cleaning the streets of Victorville. This will prevent trash from flying on the streets on windy days, and will maintain the street clean." You know, like I said, I don't want to be hard on people, but we need to have our people here in our city to take responsibility in our neighborhood too, at the same time that we can create some revenues. Number two, "I'm proposing to have parents of minors under 18 years old to be held responsible for the minors' behavior when they is minor like graffiti in our neighborhood by having them paying a fine of $200, plus minors' incarceration of one week to do community services days, removing graffiti from the street or street cleaning. If they do it another time, the fine will increase to $400, or two full weeks of incarceration to do community services, removing graffiti or picking trash from parks or doing street cleaning. For those over 18 years of age, they will automatically go to jail for two weeks doing same community service throughout the day." Number three, "For every resident who parks a leaking oil car in the street, to pay a fine that will cover the cost of the cleaning of the street, or incarceration for a full week during the cleaning removal of the oil in the streets. After the money is used for the cost of the pool maintenance, if there's any money left, should be used to assist the cost of the police department use." You know, I don't know if I'm being very strict, but you know, let's put things on the table, let's have these parents being responsible for their children's behavior. If they don't like it, if they're gonna have this kind of lifestyle, they can move to another neighborhood. That's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Earthie Miller?
Earthie Miller, and I have a couple of things I'd like to discuss. Number one, is there three of you that's gonna be running for states in '12? And we have a little thing going on, that these developers are giving people money to run. I feel the people of this city, anybody, should be able to run without having to go to a developer and have them get your seat, so that you can vote them for what they want. And that is not right. Then we have another thing going on that really bothers me, is things are being decided in the back room, before we even come out to the front, and then we're gonna vote on it. The people shouldn't know what's really going on. We're hiding things from the city, from the people in this city, and the people are getting took, and it's not right. You need to really open up and let the people know exactly what's going on. Then we have another thing going on that needs to be taken care of, and that's Doris Davies' pool, and racquetball, and all. Now, that woman gave this city so much money, it's not even funny, and I feel that that is the least we can do for her. And keep her bicycle thing in December going? We need to do things that she looked forward to. And I really, really, really bothers me that things are going on the way they are. And I'll talk to you later about, there's a couple of other things I want to talk about, and don't miss it this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Irv Cutler?
Good evening, Irv Cutler. First of all, thank you, Mr. Robertson, for clarifying the thing about the season, because you did last, you did last meeting, but unfortunately, the help doesn't know that. The Scout Master referenced the fact that the help is talking about that it's gonna be closed this season. I would suggest that you take the very same comments, and sit them down and say, listen, this is what you tell the public. Because the public is being, what do you call it, misinformed, as opposed to the progress you're making. Secondly, I need some assistance in understanding how we get this thing on the agenda long before the budget meeting, because as I suggested two weeks ago, we're letting revenue opportunities fly by us, we're charging too little for the racquetball, we're not charging for tennis courts, and we're not enforcing the fee collections for the use of the picnic sites. And this is where the revenue would come, so that when you sit down for a budget meeting in January, February, you say, okay, is the revenue collected? Right now's the time to collect the revenue. And, you know, it's just, it's just kind of, when you look at the big picture, we have the swimming classes full, we have people who are participating in the activities, we have the tennis courts always in use, we have the racquetball courts always in use. Now, if we shut down any part of that, I hope that you've all considered how much it's gonna cost, how much additional cost to pay the County of San Bernardino Sheriff's Department to go around on neighborhood patrol for the various idle children and teenagers, and racquetball players and tennis players we'll have next season, unless we do something. I don't think that's been considered. We already have a, we already have a, what do you call it, reckless attitude of the young people in the area, as several people have mentioned, but nobody's addressed the fact of pros and cons of, okay, yeah, we closed the pool, we closed this, we don't do that, because we don't have money. But nobody has said, publicly anyway, gee whiz, now we're gonna have 10,000 people running around with no park to go to, no pool to go to, my gosh, they're gonna be idle, they're gonna get in all sorts of trouble. So I think that this ought to be brought to the foreground, we can't wait till January, February. Well, number one, I really like some, I really like some assistance in knowing that we're being proactive in raising the fees on the racquetball, starting to collect fees for the tennis court, and enforcing the site permits cost. I don't know of anybody who's gone over there to pay the fee for the site permit for all these picnics they have. And then, and I want to end by saying, how do we get to, how do we get this on the agenda for the closed session? I mean, it hasn't been on the agenda, we've talked about it, there's been somebody here every time, but it's never been put on the agenda for public discussion. We make our presentations, and you know, you absorb it, and I know you contemplate it, but it's kind of like the cake's in the oven, but I haven't seen any of the yeast rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Michael?
I seem to be here for the very same reason. Oops. I'm here about the pool as well. My son takes lessons, and I feel that if my son was not in lessons, it would be a danger. If he went to a pool, he could be one of the ones that, you know, we're needing emergency help for, to make sure that we save him. I think it's very important for all children to learn how to swim, it's a huge safety concern to me. Also, the quality of our city, just like everybody's been saying, the quality of our city is gonna go down if we close down the pool. I think we actually need more things than just the pool. But since we're talking about the pool right now, it's important to keep the kids off the street, and active, and healthy, being active. I mean, there's just so many points, I can go on. You know, I was gonna mention, you know, what are they gonna do? Join gangs? You know, just like everybody else is talking about here. You know, and where do we have to go? Do we have to go to Apple Valley and spend our money there? Do we have to spend our money in this barrier, or go down the hill? We're gonna lose revenue. There's ways to change this, to turn this around, and make this a budget plus instead of a problem. I was thinking the same thing when the Last Gentleman was up here, you know, it's being utilized, it's full, it's packed, the lessons, you have to be a part of a pool to even get in, it's not like there's a lack of interest, it's not like there's a lack of money going into it. Pretty much think that's it. Other than that, I just wanted to say that if this does become an issue, I am gonna keep track of this, I am gonna watch it on the website, I am gonna keep showing up, and I am gonna start a petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Turner?
Hello, my name is Michelle Turner. I just recently moved here from another small town of Kingman, Arizona, and unfortunately, sorry to say, but this town, as big as it is, has less in it than Kingman, which is really, really bad. Because Kingman is nothing but three stops on the freeway. And I don't want to see the town that I just moved from, to move to a bigger city, I've watched it slowly in the last two years, starting to turn into another Kingman. So if you don't just want to be another stop on the freeway, then you need to provide stuff for families to do, because that's why we left Kingman, because there's really not much to do. We don't want to live in a large city, which is why we don't live down the hill, but we wanted to be able to enjoy, my son, who has special needs, the pool is something he greatly enjoys, he'd grow gills if you let him, but it's, to hear them say, well, they're probably gonna close it, it's like, why? It's one of the very few things in this town, that I've managed to find, that's within reasonable cost, and that's something most kids like to do. Even kids who don't really know how to swim yet, love to swim anyway. They like to get wet, they like to play, I don't know, you know, any kid who really doesn't. But if you're gonna take that away, what are you going to replace it with, is my question? Has anybody decided what they're willing to replace it with? Or are you just gonna leave the kids hanging, again? I mean, we've, since I've been here, they've cut my son's school, they've cut his programs, and it's like, what else are you gonna take from the kids? When do they get what they need, instead of what us adults need? Yes, we need the pool for us, for them, but they need the pool more so for them to do what they enjoy, where the parents can also enjoy time with their kids, but if not, the pool, and some of the other things you guys are closing, the libraries aren't open as often as they used to be, a lot of things are going away, so what are you guys willing to replace it with? Does anybody have any ideas of what they're willing to replace it with? Nope?
Respond during public debate.
Well, that's what I mean. The problem is, nobody seems to have a response to that particular question. Yes, it's open right now, and it'll, it might or might not be closed. Like I said, my son has special needs, he has autism, he can't understand that it might be there next year. Do you know what I mean? I can't tell him, I don't know. Because I don't know doesn't exist in autism. It's either yes or no. And when he found out today that they'll probably close it, I should say, two days ago, when he went to the pool, he was devastated. He has been crying, literally, for two days, because I can't answer him, I can't tell him whether or not it'll still be there, or if they're gonna replace it with something else. So if I'm having that trouble with my child, imagine how many who have more than one, what trouble they're gonna have explaining to their kids that they have nothing to do in their own town, except get into trouble. Which will cost you guys a lot more, in the long run and the short run, than the pool costs you now. Thank you.
Laura Avalos?
A lot of people are talking about the pool, there's been some others talking about Section 8, that's why we're here, we live in the Brentwood area. Tons of houses, Section 8, my mom and dad are homeowners, we've lived there for five years. Everything has just been going downhill, kids have no respect, parents have no respect. My mom got threatened a couple days ago because a kid put a dent in their car. There's lack of officers, I mean, when you guys talk about budget, I hope you guys talk about hiring more officers, because like someone else said, we called, they come out four or five hours later.
Or not at all.
Or not at all. We got a phone call saying, oh, what's the problem? We can't come out. If they don't call you tomorrow, call me back. We live down the hill, I've never heard of a police station that closes at 5:00. I was able to go to the police station if I had an issue, 2:00 in the morning, never had a problem, never had to call dispatch, I was able to walk in and talk to somebody. I really don't know what, I mean, it's sad that homeowners, we've had several, more than several homeowners move, because they cannot tolerate the disrespect to their property by Section 8 renters. And I even, I told my mom, if you can't beat them, join them, let's put our house up for Section 8. And you know what they told us? Oh, you can get $1,400 to $1,700, but, oh, because you live in Brentwood, it's only $1,300. So that goes to show they're bringing the property level down, because they wouldn't be able to rent the house for what they could if we lived in Apple Valley or somewhere else in Victorville. I don't know, I really hope this matter gets addressed, because they can't walk away from their house. And it's really sad to see people work all their life to get a beautiful house, and to be proud of their house, to have neighborhood kids, Section 8, walk on our grass, throw things at our dogs, have disrespect, and just trash our neighborhood. It's really, really sad. I don't know what else to say, thank you.
Teresa?
I moved up here almost six years ago, watched a beautiful house be built, a $335,000 house, put $170,000 down from the house I sold down the hill, which now I look at would have probably been better off to stay where I was at. I can't sell my house, I'm stuck with nothing but Section 8 people who terrorize my neighborhood. I've tried to be nice to them, when they've destroyed my roses, tell them, I will give you some. Though Mother's Day, I get, at 10:00 at night, five of them at my door knocking for roses, I gave them to them. The next morning, two more, I gave them roses. And they come back again, and trash them again. I get no help from the city, I get no help from the police officers. I do not mean to be mean, talking about the officers here in Victorville, but your officers are scared, when they cannot even come out to a house to help me, when I get a big dent put in my car from little kids. I do not want to hate people, and it's coming to that. You guys need to do something. I do not know what to do, I have asked to talk to the Chief of Police, I cannot talk to him. They can go to the mailbox, because they lost their key, and pound on it with a hammer, and an officer comes out and does nothing, gives him back the hammer. Is that right? No, that's government property, isn't it? I had to pay $75 more when I lost my key to Section 8? No. You allow the builders to build these halls, you allow investors to buy up properties and rent them out to Section 8. Something needs to be done in this city. The graffiti, the... The graffiti, the retaliation from them when you do do something? When people's cars, their convertibles get slit because they have six dogs in their backyard that they're abusing? And she calls and she tells them, and nobody cares? I know there is a budget crisis, but I'm sorry, you need to increase your officers. Five officers working a city this big is not enough. And I have been told that's all they did on duty at one time, by people in your officer, by your police station. Five officers.
Okay.
I want something done.
Heard you, you've had your time.
Yeah, you cut me off, thank you.
I didn't cut you off, you had more than three minutes. Thank you. All right, I have no more public comment cards. We're gonna move into our regular agenda.
Before, Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I believe, that we have an ordinance that's scheduled for our next City Council meeting that deals specifically with, it's related to noise and nuisance, but it's a bit stronger than that, the language in that, and I wish those folks would have stayed. But it has to do a bit with Section 8. Please wait for a minute.
Yeah, you might want to wait, because I did not cut you off.
What you're saying is, we really do sympathize with you. There is nothing that we, more that we'd want to do than to get, interject ourselves into this thing. The Section 8 is a federal project, I'm not chining it off as something we can't do, I'm just simply saying that there is a federal project, Section 8, called Section 8. Every time we try, this city, any other city, for that matter, tries to interject themselves into that, we wind up with nothing but a bureaucratic mess and a threat thrown over. So the local governments, like this one, ours, we're taking it on, we're building, our local ordinance is stronger, there is somebody that owns that piece of property, each and every one of those homes, and we are taking that point of action and beginning to mitigate it. The next, I believe it's about two weeks now, it was scheduled for tonight, but they kicked it down the road a couple weeks ago. We want to make sure we get our language correctly, so that we're not legalized out of it all. But we're working on it. I sympathize with you. This is incredible, that people can have $200, $300, $400 homes and have somebody that has no investment into their real estate come into your neighborhood and steal your property. There isn't anybody on this council that doesn't sympathize. I assure you, just because we're sitting up here not speaking to it at the moment, it's not on the agenda tonight. In two weeks, I hope, or whenever, City Manager can assure that, I believe it's just about ready to be teed up. That will give our local sheriffs a little bit more teeth to come in and do some things that they can't do today. And that's where we are at the moment with that. So as you come in here, I'd almost cry with you, because I live in a cul-de-sac that across the street I have problems. But I'm telling you right now that we're not turning our backs on this issue.
Okay, to that point, our Chief of Police, Don Yoder, is right there, and I'm gonna ask him to talk to you before you leave. Secondly, I didn't cut you off, okay? I allowed you to speak way over three minutes, so I find it disrespectful that you told me that I cut you off. Thirdly, to Councilman Rothschild's point, Section 8, we can't even control. If I could shut it down tomorrow, I would. I'm so sick and tired of Section 8 and the complaints that come before this council, I want Section 8 gone tomorrow. I think Section 8 is the worst thing federal government ever did, puts the responsibility on the counties, and the county says, whatever. You have to allow Section 8, and we don't care where it goes. And so we've got so much Section 8 up here in Victorville, it's ridiculous. I want it gone tomorrow. And if I could do that, if this body could legislate that to get rid of it, don't you think every single one of us up here would vote for it? Damn right, you better be well-known that we would, okay? We want it gone. It is ridiculous, and think about this for a second, those people don't even vote, okay? They don't even vote for us. They don't work, they don't vote, they don't contribute to our economy. We don't want them here, any more than anyone in this audience does, okay? We're with you, we're on your side. But you know where you all need to go if you have a problem with Section 8? Go to the County San Bernardino Board of Supervisors. Complain to them. They oversee the Housing Authority, and we are sick and tired of this being pushed down our throat. The Board of Supervisors can control this, they have the right to take over the Housing Authority, they need to take over the Housing Authority, and if there's anything you can do, go to them. Because we're sick of it. I don't know if anybody else up here feels that way, but I do.
Mayor, there is something we can do, and we can hire more officers and stop cutting positions. If you stop squandering our tax dollars, we can hire it. Hire more officers and provide the Chief of Police with the force that he needs to get this element out of our city. Remember that when you're voting on your items tonight.
Mayor, just to clarify, that item is scheduled to be before the council on September 6th, it's actually three weeks from tonight because of our first and third Tuesday schedule. And the ordinance does not speak directly to Section 8, that would make it unconstitutional. What it does speak to is multiple police visits to any household, whether they're Section 8 or not. And that's how we're addressing that issue, whether it's a loud party or some other police presence that is inordinate for that neighborhood.
Well, to Councilmember Vias' comments, unfortunately, police officers don't solve the problem, because there's federal rules and guidelines they can't deal with or enforce. It goes to the County Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of the San Bernardino County, and unless they do something more to enforce their rules and regulations and cut back on the number of applicants and approvals for Section 8 housing in the high desert, it's not gonna go away. It doesn't matter how many police officers you put on the street. I agree, we need more police officers on the street, and I'll never vote against such a proposal. But the problem is, is at the county level, and the county needs to address it.
If the officers don't show up, and it takes four hours to get a call back...
It doesn't matter, the county needs to address it. I've had this conversation with our First District Supervisor, he's well aware of it. I've had this conversation with the county CEO, Greg Deveraux, he's well aware of it, and I believe they're moving in that direction. I hope they do, and this council should urge the County Board of Supervisors to take over the Housing Authority and take over control of Section 8 and stop it from, you know, growing anymore, because it's just gotten out of control up in the high desert. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our regular agenda. We've got our Library Board of Trustees, we have a consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
There are no items under the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, under the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Agenda item number eight is request to approve the ground lease with Sterling Capital Investments, Lot 1 LLC, resulting in additional fiscal year revenue, 1112 revenue amount of $9,252 and an expenditure amount of $1,850.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is request to approve a contract with Apple Valley Insulation, Contractors, Inc., for repairs necessary for hangar 756, and approve the additional appropriation in the amount of $50,071.
I have a question. On the staff recommendation, it says that the fiscal impact is over $50,000, budgeted is zero, total amount budgeted is zero. Then it says additional appropriation, and it says from the airport operations, but it doesn't list the fund amount. So if, how much is in the airport operations?
Councilmember Vias, thanks for bringing this up again. As we discussed earlier, I did have a chance to look at the budget to compare this year's budget revenues versus expenditures, and the airport operations funded for this fiscal year has approximately $1.5 million revenues over expenditures. The exact amount from the budget is $1,527,428. So that revenue over expenditure number would be reduced by this $50,071.
And that's available funds, not restricted or committed funds, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. That's available in this year's budget. So for the electronic version of the budget in the city's financial system, those adjustments would be made, we wouldn't print a new budget, obviously. But your criticism is well-received on the funding issue.
It was just a question.
Yeah, sure, we're happy to change when we have an additional appropriation to indicate those changes in the budget as part of the agenda item. We made one change before, to make the fiscal impact more clear, and I'm more than happy to provide more clarity when it's necessary.
I appreciate that, thank you. Next question is, why wasn't this budgeted? It appears that this hangar was, you know, it's been dilapidated for quite some time. Do we not have a preventative maintenance plan? Why wasn't it budgeted?
I would ask Mr. Metzler to address that.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is an older facility. It's a facility that we actually inherited from the Air Force. To answer the question specifically with respect to preventative maintenance programs, we do have a preventative maintenance program. This is one that was, an item that was unforeseen, and the unfortunate time when we found that this was a problem was when actual people and aircraft were in the facility. So this is not something that we were able to foresee as a part of the budget process, and it goes beyond what our traditional recurring and regular maintenance of these facilities are. Before the budget process, we generally believed that the roof would, or I'm sorry, the ceiling, this is for the ceiling, would work for us. But we've had some failures, and it's largely because this is an old military-style hangar that's probably plus 50 years old.
So I'm clear, you didn't know that it was this dilapidated because somebody was in there?
I did not know, we did not know as an airport the exact condition of the roof. We were not able to predict by looking up at the ceiling that it was gonna start falling. Based upon our cursory reviews as a part of our routine and regular inspections, it did appear fine. What we did experience, and there was some contributions from rains and roof-related issues, where there were actually leaks seeping through the roof panels into the ceiling structure that has certainly contributed to it, and with the wet rainy seasons that we've had in the last couple of years, that likely has contributed to it. But unless we're actually up there in lifts, checking on a regular basis, you know, it was difficult, if not impossible, for us to predict this.
Yeah. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10 is request to ratify the expenditure of $30,361 for emergency repairs and certification of the fire suppression system for Building 761.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11 is request to approve the sublease agreement with Victor Valley College, Buildings 717B and 732, Victor Valley College.
I have a question. It states in the recommendation that SCLA will continue to pay for utilities, janitorial service and major facility repair, and continue to fund said costs from the airport operating budget. Again, the budget amount is zero, and it's just blank. Doesn't show what the fund is in the operating budget. And what are the expenses for those utilities? It doesn't indicate.
The reason it doesn't indicate that is because this item isn't actually addressing those utilities, it's just informational for the council. Originally, the school has been operated by the city, out at the airport, using city staff time, and the city has been paying those utilities in janitorial service and repairs. In this case, the only piece of work that we're contracting with the county to, or excuse me, with the college to perform is the actual educational portion of that. So the item addressing the utilities isn't before the council tonight. I don't personally know the exact utilities for that facility. I doubt Mr. Metzler does, although he may be able to offer some insight as to what it might be. Effectively, this is a savings in staff time from having to operate the college, or operate the school. We're turning that operation over to the college, who's better equipped to operate it as a school, and also opens up better opportunities for the students to obtain financial aid through the college in order to take these classes.
And so the city pays, from my understanding, is the city is paying for all of this, it's coming out of our funds?
Correct, correct. That's already part of the operations budget.
And the reason why we do this is because we want to provide educated people to take these jobs that we're opening up at the airport, is that's the benefit?
That's exactly right, yes. The employers out at the airport actually got together to start the school, the city was a partner in that, and they've worked hard to keep that school functioning. And this is basically the next progression in making that even a more viable school. We hope to eventually get the school accredited, and with the assistance of the, with the Victor Valley Community College, we hope to achieve that at some point.
How many people have we put to work through this program?
You know, Keith, I would ask you to take a stab at that. I don't know that number. I know that it's had some success.
I would just like to know that our money is going to good use.
I do believe your money is going to very good use. I would estimate the number at about 40, I don't have the exact numbers with us right now. But what's actually interesting and exciting is that the board makeup for the school is comprising not just of the city and the airport, but private business. And interestingly, the board members, as they have private interests in the airport and running the actual companies, they're actually watching these students actually grow through the curriculums that are taught, and they're actually able to handpick and create job openings for the students that actually graduate and get the certificates of AMP from the school. So right now, it estimated 40. I can probably give you a good staff update with a little bit more concrete numbers as to kind of the progression over the last 18 to 24 months, as to where we started, how many students have been through the program, how many have successfully gotten their license. One of the greatest testimonies that we've seen is the past fail rate is extremely high, and amazingly, to test for the license, we're actually getting students passing these tests in the 90th percentiles. So it's actually functioning well, and the students are getting hired by your employers at the airport.
Just out of curiosity, I would like to know, at a later time, what we've spent on this program, and how many people we've employed, so we would know. I mean, I, obviously, I have a soft spot for Victor Valley College, and, you know, higher education and getting people jobs, but I would just like to know that. I think the people would like to know where their tax money is going, and it's being put to good use in this program.
We have that readily available. In fact, what I didn't include was the actual financials of the school. The school operates as an independent nonprofit. It runs largely on grant funds. In fact, the tuitions that the students pay are actually nothing, because they're all funded either from grants from the county, or even we were successful getting a state grant to fund these job training programs. The challenge and the reason for this item, and as a part of the transition process, we've recognized as SCLA City that it's probably best and most appropriate for the long-term sustenance of this school to be run either by an independent college or the Victor Valley College. And finally, we were able to, over a lot of time and effort, to broker some type of relationship with them, where they would actually take the program on. And that's important to the school's long-term ability to continue, because right now, our program is an accredited program, is not an accredited program. And for the program to continue, if there aren't continued grants available to offset the student tuitions, then the students have no choice but to pay for the tuitions themselves. And right now, on a student basis, it's about $11,000 per student if they had to pay for themselves, and the money just isn't there. The contributions that we've been making as the airport over the inception of the program have been largely all in-kind, has been providing the two facilities that you have, providing the airport as a resource, they do a lot of hands-on training on the airport itself, and then the utilities, and that's why this item is brought to you. We traditionally do not approve, as a part of our standard leases, utilities to be paid for by us, by when another tenant is occupying the facility. But because as a part of the in-kind relationship that we've had, keeping this program running, the utilities is something that we encourage just as a part of our normal operating expense of running the airport. So this, all it does is memorializes that, since you're technically gonna be changing hands and having the college participate in running the program.
Thank you.
And just as a follow-up, I did happen to catch in the agenda item, it lists a total of 42 graduates through three classes, and an additional 25 students scheduled to graduate in September of this year.
How many of those are local?
How many of those are local? Any idea? From the valley?
All of them. In fact, we designed this program and started it to be designed to help locals transition from either careers, from different careers. Or we actually have a lot of students coming out of high school, going in and...
What are those jobs paying when they complete this training?
Um, starting wages is estimated around 40 grand. And it's a type of career that, you know, is a long-term career. It's a career that's certainly not going to go away. And it's a career that with this certificate, these are entry-level certificates that they get from the FAA. So there's certainly opportunity for them to continue to improve themselves and grow in the industry into something much larger and bigger.
Just to clarify, this is funds from SCLA that will pay these ongoing janitorial, utility, and all basement staff resources? This is not city general fund?
That is correct.
Okay. I think it's a great thing, and I'm glad that we're partnering with Victor Valley Community College.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Right, there are no items under the Redevelopment Agency or the Joint Powers Financing Authority under the Victorville Water District. Agenda item number 12 is request to approve the annual purchase order request for Performance Meter, Inc., for the purchase of water, meters, and radio installations for fiscal year 2011-2012 in the amount of $850,000.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the City Council Public Hearings, Agenda item number 13, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against determining that the City of Victorville will comply with a voluntary alternative redevelopment program as set forth in ordinance number 2278. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda item number 13. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on that item? If there's no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for a decision.
Mayor McEckern, I need to read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number 2278, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, Determining It Will Comply With the Voluntary Alternative Redevelopment Program Pursuant to Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code in Order to Permit the Continued Existence and Operation of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency.
Wait for the reading.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item number 14 is our consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 15 is request to, one, appropriate an additional $33,000 to the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange Project, and, two, approve a general service provider agreement with the Mojave Desert Resource Conservation District for the maintenance mitigation land for the La Mesa-Nesqually I-15 interchange for not to exceed amount of $33,000 in a term of five years.
Mayor McEckern, if I might, could we have the motion? If it's your pleasure to include non-substantive changes, we understand that the attorneys for the Resource District have some minor changes.
I'll entertain that motion.
I have a question. It says fiscal impact is $33,000, but it says budgeted is zero. My understanding is that it was taken out of the road development impact fees. What is the balance of that?
Similar to that last item, there is an additional appropriation request that should the council approve it. That appropriation would come from Road DIF. And I looked at the budget in between closed and open sessions. And this fiscal year, the revenue over expenditures estimate is $730,000. So that number will go down in the electronic budget, or the electronic finance system for the city, obviously. Again, we wouldn't reprint the budget. But had this come up previous to the budget being approved, it would appear in the budget with that minor change, so.
So there's $750,000 in that fund?
At the end of this fiscal year, there's estimated to be $730,000.
What is it right now?
As of right this second, I could not tell you. Basically, we budget on an annual basis, looking at the end-of-year dollar amounts. And the amount that we expect to collect versus the amount that we expect to spend is estimated to be $730,000 more than we expect to spend during this fiscal year.
Well, our roads are a mess. I think our roads come first.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Then item number 16 is request to approve the execution of a correction of description and right-of-way grant Kern River Gas Easement APN 0459-032-57.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Then item number 17 is request to adopt resolution number 11-043 entitled, "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Accepting Reimbursement of the Costs for Development of Public Infrastructure Improvements Within the City from the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority in Ratifying the Execution and Delivery of a Reimbursement Agreement."
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Then item number 18 is request for council to extend the appointment of the existing Board of Directors to the Regional Center of Victorville Development, Inc., for another one-year term.
I have been asked by constituents, they're a little confused as to, and so am I, what exactly is this board for? How do they get selected? What's the criteria to be on this board? How is it done?
I'll give a very lay answer and then ask our attorney to explain it better. The board was created in order to define what projects our EB5 funding could be spent on. That was its original purpose. There has been some attempt on this board's behalf trying to use the RCVD in order to be a bit of a backstop trying to protect RDA funds. I don't, I think the state got ahead of us on that, or maybe went back in time to create a date that makes that not work. But for the full response, I'll turn it over to Mr. D. Bartowski.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Yes, this is a, it's essentially a nonprofit corporation, and it is a conduit entity that acts between the EB5 investors and the city. The city essentially is the entity that borrows funds from the investors. And instead of having the city contract directly with the investors or the company that is putting together the investors, thereby potentially creating liability, the people that helped us set up the whole EB5 program suggested this form of structure to have essentially a conduit entity in the middle act as a barrier between the city council and the actual investors. So you don't have any contractual rights with the investors. The RCVD's role essentially is a nonprofit entity that makes or makes recommendations as to how the city council or the airport authority was to spend the monies that the investors provide through the EB5 program. As you all know, the EB5 program right now is on hold. We are in litigation with the federal government, hope to get some direction in the very near future. But at this time, the purpose of this action is just to extend the term of the two members that are on the board. There are sort of guidelines in the bylaws as to qualifications, but essentially, this needs to be a board, a nonprofit board. We don't want it to be city council members so that we don't create any problems with essentially a incompatible office issue because you essentially would be loaning monies and then making decisions on how to spend them. And this RCVD board is an independent body and could be deemed essentially a public body. They'd be serving two public bodies that may have somewhat conflicting responsibilities. So again, the purpose of this item right now is just to extend the terms of the two individuals because they expire in the hopes that we have some success with the immigration service and have the entity, the EB5 program reinstated.
So the two people that are on there is Jim Cox, the former city manager, and Sean McGlade, who is over engineering.
City engineering, correct.
Uh-huh. And so how many available seats are there?
Bylaws, I think, that are structured right now, and again, these are, the city council authorized the adoption of the bylaws, have room for three individuals. So there's one vacant seat at this point. And we haven't pushed getting that filled right now, given the fact that the RCVD program is in jeopardy, the EB5 program's in jeopardy. But essentially, it's set up for three. I think the bylaws provide that it could be five members if the council so desires.
Is there an application that they fill out? How did Jim and Sean get on there?
The initial establishment was done by our offices as the incorporator of the nonprofit. And then we gave the decision-making authority to the city council. The city council, I believe, approved the appointment of Jim and Sean to be on the board. The initial members, if I'm correct, were Doug. I think it was Sean and Reggie Lamson, who have, two of whom have left.
Because Sean McGlade works here, Jim Cox used to work here. And then you said that this board is independent and should be separate from the council, but yet we are approving who's going to be on there. It just seems kind of, it's all conflicted.
The council has the authority to determine who sits on that board, but they cannot sit as the board members ex officio because then it would create the conflict. You'd be essentially two bodies receiving monies and directing how monies are spent.
Were these individuals that are on this board now handpicked by the council?
The council made the determination as to who they would be, yes.
Didn't we nominate them and elect them?
I think you designated them and approved them, correct?
Having, you know, the management on the board for the EB5 that essentially was Buck John's program, it just sounds like we're putting the fox in charge of the hen house. It just makes no sense to me.
Andre, does not the council approve appointments to the planning commission in the same way?
Yes, you do.
So we would be, in essence, doing the same thing?
Right. And it's the same, it functions a little bit similar in that it keeps, it makes policy decisions with respect to the implementation of the EB5 program and how those monies should be spent, just like your planning commission makes policy decisions about land use issues in the City of Victorville.
As well as the Community Services Advisory Committee?
Right.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. So I can appoint someone to this, just like I appointed my commissioner and my Parks and Rec?
No. The council as a whole appoints individuals.
I got it. It just sounds pretty fishy to me.
But the city council, same way, also approves a planning commission appointment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might, the makeup of the board was an issue that was taken very seriously from day one. And I think some of your exact concerns, as you raise them today, Councilwoman Vias, with respect to chicken in the hen house kind of thing. We took that very seriously because, in fact, when we first tried to create the organization, we were looking at a much more flexible structure where council can initially appoint the members and then the members can self-appoint themselves or self-appoint new members. And we were concerned originally that exactly what I think you're concerned about would happen in that you get board members running this organization supposed to be making decisions of the best interest of the city, yet, you know, they probably have really better interests of the private interest at hand. So when we structured the organization, we very carefully structured it in such where we did it with staff, executive staff that you still control, but they operate, you know, with some autonomy so that you avoid the conflict of interest issues because of the jeopardy issues plus not knowing the exact certainty of where redevelopment is going to go. Strategically, we've seen RCVD potentially as a resource to help solve some of our redevelopment agency issues. But we have purposely pointed staff or executive members of the staff just so that you can have your best interests as a council represented as opposed to having, say, private individual interests on the board that might not necessarily have the best interest of the city at hand.
Well, I would like this board to consist of, just like Ryan said, our planning commission. I picked somebody for my planning commission that had my same views. I don't like RDA. So I would like to put somebody that doesn't like RDA on this board so my constituents are represented. Does that sound fair?
You absolutely can suggest, any candidate to be a member of the board. It takes a vote of the council to approve who's going to make up the board.
So I just agendize that at the end of the meeting?
We could put that on for the next agenda, I believe. Yes, sir?
Yeah, there is a vacancy.
Just to clarify two things. Number one, until and if the federal government allows us to still operate our EB5 program, this board would have no purpose. It does still need to remain in existence in case that happens. So it would be nothing really for any new member or any existing member to do. And then also, for a point of clarity, I know that you know this, Councilmember Vias, but maybe members of the public do not, this is a completely non-paid position. This is a volunteer position, and the members on this board earn no stipend whatsoever.
So at the end of the meeting, I'm going to agendize an announcement of someone I would like for the next meeting. Is that my understanding?
I would assume what you'd want to agendize is taking candidates to fill the vacant position at the next meeting.
Okay.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda item number 19 is request for consideration of banning the use of cellphones during closed-session meetings. I'm going to chuckle a little bit at the beginning of this one because my cellphone went off in closed session. I immediately sent the phone call to voicemail. But that being said, the reason that I requested that this be agendized is due to recent articles that have been published in numerous press publications regarding the colony settlement at the County of San Bernardino and the fact that closed-session information was going out via text during those discussions and those settlement agreements. Recently, we've had some leaks out of our own closed session that are very concerning. And so I think it's just appropriate for the protection of the council, staff, as well as our city manager, city attorney, that we don't allow for any such items. And I would extend this to laptops, iPads, whatever the case may be. Because if there's a way you can communicate at a closed session via text or via email, it proposes a problem and a liability to not only the individual member who might do it, but to the city as a whole. So I'm asking for the council to consider that.
Does this mean we won't have possession of a phone in this, or just that they'd be turned off or not use them?
What some other cities have done is essentially establish a policy which is a ban on e-communication and phones and have an exception, obviously, for family emergencies and to the extent that, you know, people on the council can be reached, then that member would probably step outside and take the call at that point. You wouldn't ban necessarily having the phone there. It would be a ban on any kind of e-communication or telephonic communication.
And I think that's the nature of what I was trying to propose. It's not so much, you know, you need to be checked and make sure you don't have your cellphone when you come in. I just, I don't think that we should be texting, emailing, doing any of that type of stuff at a closed session, so.
Or while you're in session.
Or while you're in session, for that matter. Yeah. So that, I would, oh. Dorothy Miller, that item is not on your card, but I did leave you off on 12, so please come forward because you have right to talk.
Dorothy Miller, I feel that it's not only closed session. I feel when you're sitting up there that you should not be texting. You should not be answering cellphones and all. And I know this is happening. Somebody had seen one of the audience texting one of the people up there. And I don't feel that's right. I don't feel it's just closed session. I think it should be, we should turn our phones off. Everybody turns their phones off when they're in here. Mr. Rothschild charges $5 if it went off during there because I got charged one time.
Well, I'm just making sure it's off. It is.
Yeah, mine too. I paid $5 one time for that. I paid $5 one time for that. But I feel, I really do feel that everybody should be paying attention to the business that we're doing, not listening to the phone or texting somebody else in the audience. Thank you.
Well, then, I'd like to, because it was at my request, ask the council to consider the motion that we ban the use, or what could, I have the city attorney.
If you want, I can give you a policy that comes right out of another city's policy, and I think it probably works exactly for you. We can read into the record, and you could adopt the policy. The use of e-communication during meetings, city council members shall not use e-communication at any time during a meeting of the city council at which he or she is in attendance. No city council member may use e-communication at any time during a meeting of the city council of which he or she is a member or which he or she is in attendance. The foregoing limitation shall not apply to the receipt of telephone calls or text messages from family members in the event of urgent family matter. A council member or commissioner wishing to respond to such a message during the meeting shall do so during recess or shall excuse him or herself from the meeting to place or return the call or text in a manner that does not disrupt the meeting. E-communication would be defined as electronic text or visual communication and attachments distributed via email, websites, instant messaging, text messaging, Twitter, or comparable services, and I would include, and phone communications.
All right. I'd like to make the motion that we adopt that policy.
Motion by Mayor McEckern, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 20 is a request to add an item to the regular city council meeting agendas to provide an opportunity for council committee reports. This was at the request of Councilwoman Vias. Anything additional you want to add, or you just want us to go ahead and vote?
Go ahead and vote.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Mayor McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 21 is request to appoint a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting on September 23, 2011.
How was the appointment of Mayor McEckern?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Just to be clear, the city's not paying for any travel or lodging, so I still have to determine whether I will travel to do this, but if I do, then I'll vote on behalf of the city.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 22 is a request of approval of Assistant City Manager's contract, and I am going to recuse myself on this item, as I have a personal relationship with Mr. Keith Metzler, and we've known each other for several years, so I think it appropriate that I abstain.
Do you have a request to speak on this, on this item 22, Dorothy?
Well, I read the paper this morning, how much money we make, and it's just wonderful. Well, we're at the airport. We have all we can do to take care of the airport. To end up being Assistant City Manager, I don't feel that's right. I feel there's plenty other people that could do that, that really works for the city and works for the people. And Bill Webb is one of them. I'll mention who it is. He works for this city, and I mean, he works hard for this city. And I feel that Mr. Metzler's got all he can handle with that airport, because things are getting larger out there supposedly. We're supposed to get more people working out there, but what I see and what I hear from people plum out of this city, they're hiring people to come up here to help M&amp;M move. Now, that is not right. We need people to work here. This city needs to hire people here to do all this stuff. I know you can't run what they're going to do and how they're going to do their business, but we need to take a look at this and watch and see what's really going on. And I really feel that the airport is a big enough business, that we don't need an assistant manager to help our manager at the present time. The money is not there. We don't have money for things we really need it for, but we're going to do this. And I just don't feel it's right, and I feel you people should know about it, and I will do everything I can to do, whatever we can do, to stop this. We can't go on this way. And I've gotten up here and said it before, everybody, listen, get on savetvictorville.org and see what the people are saying. Some people don't know that there's a website out there, and you need to look at it and see what's really going on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, personally, I'm completely in favor of the contract, but I believe there are some concerns about one or two provisions. I'd like to continue this to the next meeting. Make that request.
I'd second that. I read through the contract, and it's personnel and contracts, so I think both of those categories fit into the executive session. I would prefer we discuss those before we vote on them. Remember, the way this was teed up is that we assigned the city manager to sit down and arrange a contract agreement with an employee. Now, we have it before us. If there's some questions, I think we need to clarify those before we take a vote.
I have a lot of questions. One is, I'm looking at the staff rec, again, budget amount, zero. Total and budget account, zero. Remaining balance, zero. I'd like to know why this position didn't go out for recruitment?
I was acting at the direction of the city council in the previous closed session, and I know you have a lot of questions. Because this is a personnel matter, and because it is a contract matter, my preference would be to discuss all of that in closed session at the next meeting. I would defer to the attorney on how appropriate.
And I think the majority of the council feels that we should table this until.
If you're going to continue, and it's personnel matters, I would recommend that it be continued to the next meeting then, and that these issues get addressed, at least in a closed-session environment, until we get a final contract that has all the issues addressed.
Okay, then we'll continue, item number 22, to a closed session, and to discuss the contract.
That'd be the next meeting.
All right. Agenda item number 23 is a presentation of information regarding city indebtedness and purchasing policies.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I asked two members of the finance staff to make this presentation, and I don't know, this evening, when I checked with them, they hadn't drawn straws to see who was going to go first. So, in the audience, we have John Mendilla, who is our purchasing manager, and Adele Moser, who is our Assistant Director of Administrative Services in the Finance Division. Whoever comes up to the podium gets to go first, unless you guys have already decided.
Looks like it's John.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and council members, and our city manager. My name is John Mendilla. I'm the purchasing manager with City of Victorville. Been here since 2000, and I thank you for the opportunity, Councilman Kennedy, to bring this issue to light, so we can get the public into know what we do in purchasing and how the city has evolved over the last 10 years, since the year 2000. Up above and probably on your screens, and up above for the public, I did a PowerPoint presentation for Purchasing 101 back in the year 2000, correct? And prior, if you can realize back then, 10 years, 11 years ago, that we required three quotes for anything greater or equal to $500. The city manager's approval level back then was less than or equal to $2,500. The department head approval level was less than or greater than $1,000 or equal to $1,000. And city council approval, everything came before you for anything greater than $5,000. So, you can imagine the enormous magnitude of those agenda items for everything that's coming before you. We were a general law city back then versus what we are now, a charter city. And this includes professional services, so anything over $5,000 came before you. We were on a people soft financial system back then, and the approval levels that came through there for the signatures for everybody, all the parties involved, so it's not just one person deciding that things are going to get purchased. It takes a group and a team of people, especially departments. They had, the department who wanted to purchase something had to fill out a purchasing requisition, complete with the description of the item. If they needed to go out to quotes, it had all the backup of all the quotes, and because we were a general law city, we were required to give to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, along with the budget account coding that had that. It came through, once they filled that out, it came up to purchasing. I personally reviewed every single account code to make sure that it was in the budget to afford that. If it was not, then I put an email to that department saying, we would like a budget transfer, or do you have any other funds that you can make up for this, or do you need to go to council to ask for additional funds? After that department had approved that, it would go to our Assistant Director of Finance, Adele Moser, where she would sign it, and then it would come back to me as purchasing manager, and I would distribute that out to our buyers. Each of my buyers are responsible for all the departments. They would go ahead and turn that into a PO, and then from there, when the item came in, the department was responsible for receiving it, their copy of the PO. They would sign that it was received, send it up to purchasing. We would close out the PO. The invoice would go to AP, but before the invoice got to AP, there was a little, what all department heads know, as a little blue slip, that required the supervisors, the managers, the assistant directors, and the department heads to sign that, that this was received and it's okay to book. And we used that as a guide for reconciliation, to make sure that on the PO, they put an account code, so in that blue slip, they had to put on the account code also. So, if it changed and said they wanted to book it to something else, it would get kicked back and saying, you approved the purchase order under a certain amount, we encumbered the funds, and these funds are available to spend, you need to adjust the account code. So, we would then correct it, then it would go to AP, and then they would pay a check. So, if you can imagine, for every one of these transactions, you know, three quotes required for anything greater than 500, and then every item coming to council has gone through that process. And if we were going to bid out for a project above 5,000, purchasing would get that and would go out to bid. We'd competitively bid it, you know, we were with the public contract code, so we'd have to advertise it, you know, twice, you know, with six days in between. We sent it out to our bid list. We have an opportunity for all the contractors to come up, fill out a vendor application that's available online, to get on our vendor database, so if any of the items on the NIGP commodity code come up for what their speciality is, then we would go ahead and mail out those solicitations to them. During this process, we would also mail out solicitations to all the chambers to make sure that all their members were aware of all the opportunities within the city. So, there's a lot of processes, as you can see, and that I've just explained, that what goes through, so something's just not a purchase, just a purchase, it's well thought out, it's been backed by a team who's looked at, you know, the debt or the liability that it's going to place on the city and the encumbrance that it needs to be on there. Go on and move. You know, as the years went by, since 2000, the city started growing, so in 2003, we adopted what is called the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures. What that allowed, the city manager wanted, city management at the time, John Roberts and his staff, wanted to have more flexibility in a lot of the public works projects coming to fruition, to give them a little bit more flexibility on not having to delay any of the projects getting to full construction. So, with that, the state has this Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedure, where it allows the cities who adopt it by resolution and ordinance, they enact it with the state controllers, and we're put on a list that we are allowed to use this alternative bidding measures. So, public works projects less than or equal to 25,000 can be performed by in-house employees by a force account, or by a negotiated contract or PO. Any public works that are less than that 25,000 or equal to is in formal bidding procedures, where you just go out for quote. Public works projects greater than that 25,000 is a formal bid, where we put it out publicly, we advertise it twice again, we put it on the website, we mail it out to all our people on the bid list, anybody who's interested. And with that, the city also adopted the quote level to go up from $500 to $1,500, so anything greater than 15 or equal to $1,500 would require the three quotes. The city manager approval level went up from 2,500 to 25,000. The department head approval level went from 1,000 to 10,000, and then anything greater than 25,000 would require city council approval with that, and we were still a general law city. Next, in the year 2005, again, city management at the time wanted more flexibility in the professional services, and at the time, we had in the UNICODE that we required it would be mandated for us to go out for competitive solicitation on every single professional service. And what that did in ordinance 2099 in 2005 is we exempted that to give a little bit more flexibility. We started working with a lot of professional firms that have been already pre-qualified up here in the high desert that were local, and instead of having to mandate competition, we were able to just go out and get solicit quotes. So, there was that competitive solicitation at the formal level, it was more at an informal level, or if time was of the essence, we were allowed the flexibility to go ahead and negotiate with a particular vendor, local vendor, who can do the project in a timely manner and within our city's needs. Again, in 2007, what we did is, the ordinance 2208, we updated, because those limits from the previous thing, when we adopted the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures, we didn't take it to the state limits. The state limits were 125,000 for formal bids. We kept it at 25. We wanted to take small baby steps, so we can make sure that we were in control of the competitive process and make sure that there's nobody that was going to either forego or try to bid split, which would be considered a misdemeanor under the public contract code. We were trying to slowly get them in the training to utilize this in the best needs of the city. So, by 2007, the city management decided that we were able to do that. We had a good track history with staff and the department heads adhering to those rules. So, we took it up to the state guideline levels, where in-force or in-house staff can do projects up to $30,000, and.
Can you give the 07 slide, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. And the state limit of 125,000 was enacted for any public works project, so anything greater than 125 would be formal bidding, anything lower, from 25,000 to 125,000, would be informal bidding. And again, we also adopted at the same time to take professional services level limits up to 125,000 for formal RFPs. But again, this did not change the city council's approval level, it was still at 25,000, as it is today. So, anything above that, you would still see before you. In 2008, city had went to, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Andre, that city management at the time, and you as the governing body, and those present at that time, wanted to protect cities, the city funds from state raids on those monies. So, we decided to go and let the voters take this issue to the voters, and had them vote in 2008 to make us a city charter. They went ahead and approved that, and we also approved some charter rules of procurement with our current municipal code 2.28 purchasing system. And what a charter city has the ability to do is to try to utilize government funding to get more bang, as we call it in the industry, to get more bang for your buck. If it was a municipal affair, let's say we were going to fix Civic Drive, which has no state issues, it's not like La Masonas Guali where they have a statewide concern, it's just a municipal affair, and if we're using local funds, we have the ability to let that project out go without using prevailing wages. Prevailing wages currently, right now, are in line with union wages. You can pay an electrician anywhere from $50 to $80 an hour to do an electrician job. You might have some local shop, small mom and pop shops here locally, that have their shop wages at anywhere from $20 to $25. We can utilize those people and those Cooley constructions to do roadwork here locally, and utilize those non-pervailing wages to use their shop wages to bid on a project, so we might be able to get more bang for the public's dollar. Again, our current municipal charter code takes the services, supplies, and equipment less than or equal to $5,000. Anything less than 5,000 requires no quotes, but again, it's just a guideline. Currently, in the city, we have not trained or allowed our departments to do that. We still have it at $1,500. Anything above 15, we require three quotes. Again, for anything between 5,000 and 25,000, it's an informal process with charter cities. Again, for anything between 5,000 and 25,000, it's an informal process with charter cities. Anything, for us as a charter city, and anything greater than 25,000, it's a formal bid. One of the new things that we did with the charter is we allowed the public works projects, as long as a municipal fair with local funds, that anything less than that would be non-competitive at 25,000. Anything between 25,000 and 500,000 was informal, where we can go out and get quotes. Anything from greater than half a million dollars would be a formal bid. Again, advertising it out there, mailing it all out. And then professional service was still based on competence and qualification, and that was still at 25,000. I think one of the biggest pushes that we did for, for charters, that allows the flexibility during this great growth period that we had over the last decade, to allow our city engineers and our public works projects to go forward at a more rapid pace, to enhance the benefits and features of the city, rather than hold them back and delay that process. And lastly, what I want to do, before any questions, is to put before you some of the things, and some of the models and, and things that we in purchasing, and I believe any public servant would look at, is to act only in the public's interest. We are a trustee of the public's money. We follow the law, we strive for efficiency. We advocate, and we have it in our purchasing policies and the manuals and the trains that we do, that we do not accept gifts from vendors. We do not socialize with vendors. We don't play favorites. And one of our biggest caveats is to ensure adequate, fair, and open competition, because in doing so, you allow the natural business sense to take its place where you're going to get a sharper pencil, because they know there's going to be 10 people competing against them. And if they're really hungry for that job, they'll give you a competitive price and be able to do that job, where we're going to end up eventually getting more bang for the buck. And at that point, that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions that I can take.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is that I asked for this in response to council member's statement, that we're spending money like there's no tomorrow. I'm getting a very strong impression that, that it's a, it's a controlled process.
Correct.
It's carefully budget-driven.
Exactly. And, and council member Kennedy, with that, we just converted over and went live on July 1st with a new munis financial system, which is everything electronically. So instead of, and I know this was the happiest day for all the department heads, instead of signing those blue slips and, you know, like Sean, our poor city engineer would have to sign like 50, 60 items a day, we now do it all electronically, so it's all paperless. So in there, we've established workflow approval levels to where anything under 1,500 dollars goes to like leads and supervisors, anything up to 10,000 is department head level, anything up greater than 10,000 to 25 is at the city manager level. Anything above that would have to go for council, and we would wait for the backup to be attached to that rec, to say that the agenda was taken to council, the minutes that it was approved, and then we would go ahead and convert those into POs. So you still have it all electronically on the workflow to ensure that there's more than, it's all of the team that is looking at those procurements and pushing them forward.
And how do you think this system prevents department heads, or the city manager, or the assistant manager, to step in and override and say, I don't want to bother with all that stuff, I just want it done this way, spend that money?
Well, actually, in the system, we really, nobody can override other than, you know, the hierarchy and finance. And it's going to take an act of either all of the city council to vote on it, our city manager to override something in the system that has been set up for a workflow process to make sure that all the integrity is in the system. So if you really wanted to override it, you would have, I mean, I can probably speak for a lot of the department heads and a lot of the staff, for the first seven weeks, and that's what we've been on the system, they've probably gotten more rejections than they have approvals. Because after it goes through the workflow process, it still has to come through finance to make sure that we check all the Ps and Qs, make sure that all the attached documents are in there, all the, again, the agenda items, the quotes, any brochures from the vendors, anything like that, any sole source justifications, all that has to be in there. If it's not, if there's no signed, fully executed agreements, it gets rejected, and they have to, the end, end user department has to supply that information before it goes forward to be converted into a P.O. One of the luxuries that we've had with the system versus PeopleSoft is every single transaction that the city does has to come through the system. So every time Fleet needs to purchase anything from NAPA, and they do that daily, the system is capable within minutes to get that rec on, to let it go through the approval process, scan the invoices in there when they order, or any proposals, and then have it converted to a P.O., get received on, and then it gets shipped over to A.P. for them to pay on the next paycheck. I mean, the, the system is very robust, it's, it's all through paperless, and we think it's going to be the next generation as we go forward, probably for the next 20 years we'll have the system. But there's a lot of measures and policing in place at all levels, from the end-user department all the way to finance, to make sure that no unappropriated or unencumbered or, you know, anything gets through there without either your approval, city, city management approval, or even finance approval with the proper documentation to back it up in an audit trail.
Thank you for this presentation. However, Mr. Kennedy, this has nothing to do with my statement. My statement is, is that we're spending money like there's no tomorrow, meaning that we're handing out contracts without RFP processes, that we're suing the federal government, that we have numerous failed projects on the books, we're cutting law enforcement, we're closing parks and racks. That was my statement. And I asked, what are we going to do? We're supposed to be insolvent. And I wanted to find out through a third party whether or not we're going to be bankrupt, like the Bell auditor said, and are we going to file bankruptcy? But nobody here would agendize that. But instead, we got all this fluff. We know we have internal controls. It's these four yes-men that keep approving them.
Thank you.
For mayor members of the council, I would like to thank John. He's one of our superstars in the city, making sure that we're doing the right things for the right reasons, and I appreciate all the work that he does in purchasing. And all of the work that he's done is we've transitioned from strict controls to more flexibility under past city management, as, as that was the request, and then as, as Mr. Cox came in and put in more controls and reduced those purchasing amounts, those authorities, John worked with our city attorney's office to, to get all of those things in place, following the direction of the city council and city management. Thank you, John. Adele, if you could come up and give a presentation on the city's debt going into all the agencies of the city?
While Adele is on her way up, I just, I've got a comment. If you read our financial statements that were issued in June of 2010, and I expect they won't be a lot different this year, the city, entire city entity with all of its arms and legs, has about a billion two in assets, and we have a little over, just under $500 million in debt. That is a net worth or net assets of about $700 million. That's not how you define a bankrupt entity. We certainly have cash and solvency problems, and it's important to understand our debt, and that's the reason I hope Adele is here to help us with that.
That's exactly what we're going to be talking about tonight. Honorable mayor and council members, our presentation tonight reviews the long-term debt and the outstanding debt that we have within the city and within its component units. These debt instruments are through bond issues, through lease agreements, and then also through The first slide that we show, we'll show the city of Victorville's debt that we have at this present time. The first one is that we had a 1997 C.O.P. for our community center that was, that had refunded a 1989 Series C.C.O.P., and that final payment was made in 2009. And the next instrument that we'll be talking about is the municipal finance corporation lease for our energy retrofit project. That final payment was made in November of 2010. Then we have a Bank of America lease for fire apparatus. That final payment will be made this November of 2011. We also have a key government lease for our irrigation system at the golf courses, actually our Green Tree Golf Course, and that final payment will be in 2015. We have a, we had a CoAmerica lease for our 43 vehicles. When we encountered some funding problems, we terminated that, that lease in 2010 and returned those vehicles. The total debt for the city of Victorville is $890,410. Our next slide shows, oh, did I click it too far? This is our Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. Actually, it's the Victorville Municipal Utilities Services Financing that they've done. And first, we have our Zion's First National Bank, and this was for some cogeneration equipment at Foxborough, and that final payment was made in May of 2011. Next, we have our, our Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority Variable Lease Rate Lease Revenue Bonds, and this was for our Foxborough cogeneration plant. On May 4th of 2005, the, we issued 401 million dollars worth of variable lease rate lease revenue bonds. In July 5th of 2006, we issued another 23, 645 million dollars worth of variable rate lease revenue bonds. In that same year, we refunded the 41 million and the 23 million dollars into the 83.77 million dollar variable lease revenue bonds that we have in place at this point. That final payment will be made in year 2040. And the total, the total debt for the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority is 83,747,000 as of June 30th, 2011. Our next slide will show the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The first debt that we have here is the 1994 Tax Allocation Bonds, Series A, which were issued for $10,450,000, which had refunded a 1991 Tax Allocation Bond. These bonds were paid off in 2003 with, with an additional financing. Then we had in 1994, an additional Tax Allocation Bond, Series B, which was issued for $1,010,000, and that was issued for repaying the city of Victorville for a portion of the city's advances to the agencies, and that final payment was made in 2004. Then in 1994, we also had a Tax Allocation Series C Bonds, which were issued for 4.9 million dollars. These were used to finance redevelopment activities, and they were also refunded by a 2003 Series B Bonds. In 2002, we had a Tax Allocation Bond, Series A, for $9,710,000. These were used to finance redevelopment activities, and the final payment for those bonds is 2031. And then in 2003, we refunded those 1994 Series A Bonds with a Series A issue of $10,195,000. And the final payment for that will be 2031. Also in 2003, we have the Series B, which refunded the 1994 Series C, and that final payment will be 2031. Then in 19, around 2006, we issued a $22.975 million worth of Tax Allocation Bonds, and those will be repaid in year 2036. Our total current debt for the redevelopment agency at this point, as of June 30th, 2011, is $42,395,000. The revenue to support this debt comes from our tax increment for both, for the annual Next is our material recovery facility. In 1995, we issued bonds to, jointly with the Town of Apple Valley to construct our material recovery facility. Our portion of that was refunded in the year 2004, and our portion at that point was 2.9 million dollars, and the final payment will be in 2020. We also encountered, we also got into a lease, a capital lease with Bertec in the year 2004. That, that total debt was for a little over $3 million, but our 50% obligation for the city of Victorville was $1.5 million. And that was used to make certain facility improvements in order to increase material recovery and reduce operating costs. The final payment for that will be 2016. So the total debt here is 2.7 million dollars. The revenues for this debt comes from the rates that we charge our customers through our solid waste management services.
This facility is where your blue cans go when the trash trucks come and pick them
Our next is the Victorville Water District. We had the consolidation in 2008 with the Victor Valley Water District and the Baldi Mesa Water District, and so we assumed some debt from the Baldi Mesa Water District. That included a 1998 Certificate of Participation, which was initially sold for 2.8 million dollars. These funds were to finance public improvements with the Baldi Mesa Water District, and that final payment will be in 2024. We also have 2006 Certificates of Participation, which were sold for 13 million dollars. These funds were used to finance public improvements within the Baldi Mesa area, and that final payment will be 2036. In 2004, there was an installment sale agreement for 2.2 million dollars, and these funds were used to purchase water rights, and that final payment will be this year of November 2011. The total current debt for the Water District is 14 million dollars, and the revenues are generated from rates that are given to the Baldi Mesa customers to provide financing for them.
Before you leave that, a quick, um, where did the arsenic plant come in on that? What, what year was that?
That was the 2006 Certificates of Participation for 13 million dollars.
That was how much?
13 million.
That was a federally mandated doohickey that had, that hit all across the country. Little water districts like these, all, every place were being hit by this stupid rule, thanks to President Bill Clinton, I think, leaving office. That was one of his gifts to our local governments.
Actually, he wasn't in office that year, Mike. That was a-
Well, it rolled in, actually, it rolled in that year. That was, it was still his stuff, but it rolled in that year.
And I might add that, that we had reserved for that, and when we did that arsenic figure plant, we, we paid for it. We all knew during this, this consolidation of the two districts, that Baldi Mesa had some, had some infrastructure issues out there that they just, they really needed help with, and so, I mean, I, I don't think there's any question, this is reasonable amount of debt. But are you saying Baldi Mesa customers are paying for that, not all water district customers?
That's correct.
That's correct, Councilmember Kennedy. Through the LAPCO process, the consolidation required that we set up two improvement districts within the Victorville Water District. Baldi Mesa, we now refer to as Improvement District Number Two, so those rate payers pay this debt. It's largely paid, actually, through property taxes that those rate payers also contribute. And the, the revenues and the reserves that were part of the former Victor Valley Water District is kept separate in Improvement District Number Two and is not used to pay off this debt.
I'm not sure I knew until now who we should have blamed for that.
There was a 10-year lead on that, so he was long gone. Nobody would, who? Clinton? Yeah, it was his ruling when he walked out, the last day in office.
Moving on, we have the EB5 notes payable that we have on our books. On January 15th of 2009, the city of Victorville, on behalf of the Regional Center of Victorville Development, Inc., submitted an application to the USCIS requesting its consideration and approving qualified investments to be made by Visa, investor Visa applicants within the city of Victorville, and designation was awarded on June 28th, or 2009. At, at June 30th, 2011, our current notes payable, our loans payable through this program is $6 million.
That reflects the ones that have been paid back.
That's correct, as of June 30th, 2011. I believe there's been some since then. Moving on to our S.E.L.A. Airport Debt, S.E.L.A.A., I should say, though it's all through the authority that, where this debt was issued. In 2001, my legend wasn't quite big enough to, to, to capture this first one, and so in 2001, you'll see the little brown bar there. We issued 13.5 million dollars worth of debt, which refunded a $7 million debt to the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority Lease, taxable lease revenue notes that were Series 1998. These bonds were refunded. The 2001 Series S.E.L.A. Bonds were refunded through a 2006 bond issue later. In 2003, S.E.L.A. issued 45 million dollars worth of debt, and 13 million dollars of that was for housing set aside projects, and these bonds were refunded with an additional S.E.L.A. debt that was in 2006 for both non-housing and housing. In 2005, S.E.L.A.A. In 2005, SCLA-A issued $42.185 million worth of debt. These bonds were partially refunded by the 2006 housing and non-housing, or by the non-housing bond issue. That final payment will be in 2030. In 2006, SCLA issued Revenue Parity Notes on Non-Housing for $62.78 million, which refunded the 2001, the 2003, and part of the 2005 Series. The final payment for that will be 2043. In 2006, SCLA issued, for the housing portion of that, they did a refunding of $16.85 million worth of debt that refunded the 2003 housing bonds. That final payment will be in 2043. In 2006, SCLA issued taxable Revenue Parity Bonds for $45,020,000. And that will be, the final payment for that is 2043. In 2006, we also issued forward bonds for $34,980,000. That final payment will be in 2043. In 2006, we also issued tax subordinate bonds for $64,165 million. That final payment will be in 2043. In 2006, we also issued $41 million worth of housing bonds, and that final payment will be in 2043. In 2007, we issued $42 million worth of housing debt, or of subordinate debt. That was non-housing. That final payment will be in 2043. In 2008, we issued $13 million, which partially refunded some revenue notes that I'll talk about in just a minute. That 2008 Series, its final payment is in 2050. And then we talk about, there's a couple of notes that we were involved with. 2006, SCLA had taxable Industrial Development Revenue Notes of $30 million, and these were issued to construct the hangars at the airport. These notes were paid off by the 2006 Series bonds that were issued. Also in 2008, we had some taxable Industrial Development Revenue Notes of $35 million. These notes were partially refunded by the 2008 Series of about $10 million, and then the remaining $25 million was paid off on October 7th, 2008. We also were involved with a lease, with CoAmerica Leasing Corporation, which leased some equipment, some gas generation equipment out at SCLA, and that final payment was made in 2010. Our total outstanding debt for SCLA-A as of June 30th of 2011 is approximately $323 million. Again...
Why would we issue housing bonds at SCLA? There's no housing there.
Mr. Metzler.
It's a 20%...
You have a requirement to set aside 20% of the monies generated in the project area, and the monies at SCLA are from tax increment from the entire project area. So Victorville has a portion of the project areas in the VITA project area, and has to do housing projects in its portion of the VITA project area.
And just to add on to that, by the way, this is a takedown with the property tax increments that are within the Redevelopment Agency. They have nothing to do with the cities' general fund.
That's correct. The revenues, you know, for all these debt service payments are pledged revenues from the tax increment.
And our rule was, and it's pretty much generally accepted throughout the state, is that we were bonding at about 70% of what we could have theoretically bonded at, at 100%. We didn't go to 100% of property values. We hit it at 70%, which the banks wanted us to do for their comfort zone as well. The property taxes fell 50%, so you can see, even with the cushion built in, we barely caught it, you know, before we were hitting a negative cash flow on the payback. But that cushion did catch probably what was the most dramatic property tax drop in the history of this country we may never see again, but it was just enough to hold the line on this, so that we were making debt payment as we sit here today because of that cushion that was built into it.
And just for clarity, let me make sure I'm clear on this and that everybody else is. The bondholders' only claim is against the tax increment.
That's correct.
The revenue that flows from the tax increment. The bondholders have no claim against the real estate. They have no claim against the city of Victorville, or the residents, or the taxpayers. Their claim is against the tax increment revenue. It's a revenue bond. Am I clear on that?
That is correct.
Am I a little off the mark on that?
Nope, you're 100% correct.
Is Daily Press here? I wish they were here.
This is not a...
Just be clear that this debt is not a debt of the citizens of the city of Victorville. It's paid by the tax increment, by the people who are paying that tax inside the RDA.
And if we didn't exist as an RDA, an entire block of money would go to the state of California.
State's going to pick up that debt.
And the businesses wouldn't be here, of course, because we wouldn't have the streets, utilities, and everything. All I'm saying is that that increment was captured and controlled here versus captured and controlled in Sacramento, and you've seen how well they've done in Sacramento. They're trying to steal it now.
You also do not set the tax rates or increase the tax rates to pay these debts.
Councilmembers, I think we're just about done with the slides. I think we have maybe one final one. That's the outstanding debt as a total, the entire city family, if you will, SCLA-A, the Water District, the RDAs, and of course, the city and BMOs. So that's the final slide. Adele, I don't know if you have any more comments on this.
Well, I have one more slide that just shows the percentage of debt for each one of the entities that have the obligation for that debt. First of all, it's the city of Victorville, and we have 18% of the total debt that we've talked about tonight. Then we have the Redevelopment Agency, which has $8.9 million, or 8.9% of the entire debt. The Water District has 2.99% of that entire debt, and then SCLA-A has 69.64% of that debt.
And the vast majority of that city debt is from the Foxborough bonds that were issued, that $83,770,000.
Adele, I have to say, I've read the financial statements that we get at year-end, and they have never been as clear as this is. I commend you. This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adele.
Can we get copies of this by our councilman?
Okay, if there's no further discussion or questions, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 24, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for Upcoming City Council Agenda. I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
I have none.
Member Kennedy?
None.
Councilmember Vias?
Yeah. I have been receiving, just like here tonight, numerous complaints about law enforcement not responding. I think that Captain Yoder took a beating here tonight, and I would like to have a presentation from the police department, and I'm really concerned about Brentwood and what these people are going through. And I think that I would like to see a presentation from the captain of what's happening, what the call times are, what the response times are, so that we, and tell us, do you need more officers? Is it out of control? The impressions that I'm getting from my constituents and from these council meetings, it sounds like it's pretty frightening for these people to go home at night, and that's very concerning to me.
Agreed with that?
I agree with that.
And then I'd also like to agendize, we've, you know, for several meetings, had people coming in about the Parks and Recs and the pool. If we can agendize, you know, putting a plan together of how we can keep this pool open, and maybe the staff can come up with some ways. It sounds like this is very important, and I truly believe that we need to start paying attention to our youth, because they're going to become adults, and, you know, we can't lose them to the prison system.
I agree with that. I've had that very same thought, that Parks and Rec ought to give us an update of where they are on that project.
And, okay, never mind. This is for something else. Okay, go ahead.
I think that update should include the rates and the different schedules that you have, because what I've heard here is that, you know, the swimming pool is full, and all this other, everybody's using the facilities, so there has to be a rate attached to the use, and perhaps, you know, revisit the rates. I also heard that one presentation, many of the people that were using the swimming pool were from out of the city, so maybe we should establish a rate for, you know, one for citizens of the city and one for outside.
That's a good idea.
Okay. I think we're all in favor of having that discussion. I've got somewhat of an urgency item I want to make sure gets on the next council agenda. Since we filed the lawsuit against federal government on our EB5 program, I've been getting contacted by our investors wanting their money back. And I think, although I continue to be hopeful that we'll keep our regional center alive, I think it's time that this council approved the refunding of all investors' money. So I'd like the council to consider that at the next meeting as an agenda item, and would direct staff to bring that forward to us, so that we can move that process forward and avoid any potential litigation. Everyone okay with that? All right, now moving on to Agenda Item Number 25, Reports from Councilmembers. Councilmember Vias?
I have an issue with the statement that the city manager made when I requested information on why the recruitment process wasn't being done for the Assistant City Manager's position. He made the statement that we, as the council, approve that. That's a cop-out. This council accepts recommendations from staff, and they need to own it, and that's the problem. Mr. Robinson, you recommend that we should go out for bid, or you recommend that we should go out for recruitment. You've got four yes-men here that are going to say yes. So I think the people deserve to know the truth, and they deserve to know your reasoning for not going out for recruitment.
As much as I would love the opportunity to defend my recommendations on the Assistant City Manager contract, I've been advised that that discussion should take place in closed session, and I'm going to follow that advice.
I have none. I just, there was one comment that was made, alluded to the, the statement was made that the police department is afraid to go out into some of these areas. That is a ludicrous statement. I've seen these men and women, whether you know them from the Sheriff Department, and they do a tremendous job. If you understand the priorities for these activities, they take their calls that are emergencies, and some of these, you know, once something, once somebody dings your car, you're gone. That's at the bottom of the line, and you may not get someone until the following day. Yes, we need more police officers. The section aid, it has nothing to do with hiring more police officers. It has to do with eliminating that problem or that program. So once again, I would just like to commend our Sheriff's Department, and I'm sorry that that woman left that, made that statement, but you guys are doing a great job, Chief.
You know, I totally agree with you, Rudy. I feel that the buck stops here at the council level. The police only can do what the resources that we provide them. So it's important that we provide them with the resources they need, and that's more cops, and we need to stop cutting positions. So the police department, they are not afraid. I've been out on sweeps with them, and let me tell you, these guys are tough guys. I mean, they don't hesitate for a minute to get in someone's face. You know, we just need more of them to do it.
Councilmember Rothschild?
Yeah, I sit on the Mojave Desert Mountain Integrated Waste JPA, which doesn't mean anything to any of you, except it manages, the group manages all of the way we manage our waste. There was an interesting report given to us that I thought I'd share with you. It's from the federal prison. As I indicated before, one of the first job captures we made after George Air Force Base closed the federal prison. They have 5,000 inmates on average and 900 employees at the federal prison. So think of that as a community of about 6,000 people. They have virtually zero waste leaving the federal prison. Now, it wasn't the case when they first started, but the way they've done it, of course, he admits, they have got some captive workers there that can't go anywhere, so their work is pretty, but they put out virtually zero waste to the dump site out there. They recycle as much as they can, and they even have a few trucks that go off and sell some of their recycled material at the prison there. And they went from costing $10,000 a month in terms of their business to making $10,000 through the recycle programs and everything else. So I compliment him. I was shocked when I saw that. He says now, obviously, you can't do that in the real world simply because the prisoners are there for like 40 cents an hour type of work, where out in the real world, it's at least minimum wage, I don't know what minimum wage is, seven and a half dollars or something, so there's a significant difference in the labor force. But the fact is, I was really impressed with their ingenuity in trying to make something out of a program like that, and putting another value on those people in terms of their training. So anyways, it was a neat story, so I thought I'd share it with you.
Just an observation for those of you who stuck it out to the bitter end. We listened to a number of people speak in public comment this morning, and every single one of them who stood there and expressed their view was telling us the most important thing on their mind, for sure, at that moment. They went to a lot of trouble to come here and tell us what they thought about this issue that was so important to them. And not one of them was trivial. I'm not going to say that I disagreed with a soul standing there. Some of the tone got kind of accusatory, as if we're sitting here and we just don't care, and we're letting all this stuff happen that's bad because we don't care. The problem is, we've got to balance all those issues and about 30 or 50 or 100 more. Every one of those priorities is important, but they're one of a whole bunch, and I just, I hope the public realizes that that's a task. We asked for the job, so I'm not shirking it, but keep in mind that the balancing of priorities, especially with limited resources, is just a tough job, and we've all got to commit to do it together. If we work on it together, we can get it done.
All right, thank you, and I'd just like to echo some of the comments of my colleagues to our police department and Captain Yoder. You know, you guys do a great job on a daily basis in our community. I know it's a tough community to be in charge of, but I know you're doing the best job with the resources that you have. I know you need more resources. You've personally told me that, and I personally committed to you that we will get you those as the funds become available. I'm hopeful that, you know, these things, this economy, everything's churning itself around, and will allow us as a council to be in a position where we can do things like fund additional officers to the tune of adding five to 10 a year, because when I came on the council, I thought we needed 50 more. Still do. But money's the issue, and we'll continue to work towards that. But I encourage the report. I want to hear you tell us we need more, if that's the way you feel, because I think the council needs to hear that. But with that, my hat's off to you and the job that you do and the guys that you have working for you, and men, women as well. All of them do a wonderful job on a daily basis. With that...
Ryan, if I might, just point of clarification for staff. Ms. Vias, you previously mentioned that you wanted to agendize the RCVD vacancy.
Uh huh.
I want to show this consensus to put that on the agenda.
Yes, yeah. Are we all okay?
And Mr. Mayor, before we close the meeting, I actually would like to request, the last item is always reports by council members. We've had some excellent work that's been done by our staff over the last couple of weeks, and for future meetings, I would ask that you allow me to give a report as well in the same manner that you do, because I want to be able to commend some of the staff members that are out there working hard for all of you and all the people of Victorville.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
We're all good. All right. With that, we adjourn.